Welcome to the town council meeting of Monday, January 4th, 2010. If you'd please rise for the pledge, we'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could remain standing for a quick moment of silence for the men and women serving us here and abroad, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. And last, quick reminder, if you have a cellphone with you, if you could put it on silent mode or turn it off, we'd appreciate that as well. Okay, we have three public hearings, which we need to take care of tonight. As you can see, we're down to three counselors at this point in time. We do have another one of our counselors who's stuck in traffic and on the way. So we're actually going to open the public hearing and start with the FY11 town budget first, and then hopefully, our other counselor or two will join us for the other two public hearings when we'll need a full board, or at least four of us, at least four of us here at that point. So I'm looking for a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, all is in favor of opening the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. We're in public hearing, and as I said, we're going to take item C first, which is the FY11 town budget. Dave, if you wouldn't mind giving us all a summary of where we're at tonight, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Sure. This is the council's first public hearing on the FY11 budget, which includes six warrant articles. The articles not for consideration tonight include a bond article. The council later on this evening will be deciding whether to hold a separate public hearing on that proposed bond in accordance to state law. Also, there are three collective bargaining agreements, which will be on the ballot, the agreements of the fact-finding reports, and two of those have yet to be finalized. One, the council has voted on, and I was notified on Thursday morning that the police officers ratified that agreement. So the document we'll be working off of today is up here. If you don't have a copy, it's a six-page explanation of the town budget, and it probably would be helpful to go to page five, which provides for a summary of where the budget currently stands, including the collective bargaining agreement with our police officers. The anticipated increase in the tax rate is six cents, or 1.29 percent. And as you can see from that summary, there are currently four warrant articles which do impact a tax rate. The first one is Article Five, the Expenditure Maintenance Trust Fund. The second is the operating budget, from which the town funds most of its operating expenses. The third is the capital reserve funds, and the fourth is, will be Articles 10 through 12, currently Article 10, which is a proposed agreement with our police officers, dispatchers, and clerical workers in the police department. So where we stand now is that the recommended budget is up 1.29 percent. From this point forward, the council will take input this evening on any of these articles under consideration. February 2nd is the deadline for petition warrant articles for budget request. In order to be valid, it must be submitted to the town hall by February 2nd with the signatures of at least 25 registered voters. The council has scheduled its final public hearing to include the entire warrant, any collective bargaining issues, fact-finding reports, and petition warrant articles on Thursday, February 4th. And soon after, the council will finalize the warrant. It will be posted for our town meeting. The budgetary town meeting is on March 14th, and the election of officers, including charter commission, I believe is on March 10th this year. So again, Mike, this handout walks through each article under consideration this evening with a brief explanation for the purpose of each recommended appropriation.
Okay. Dave, just to kind of level-set again how we started this process, the council gave you direction to develop a budget which results in no greater than a 2 percent increase in the town portion of the tax rate. So on page five, what you're saying is, with everything considered through this evening, and that includes the recently agreed-upon bargaining agreement with ASME 3657, we're looking at a 1.29 percent increase in the town tax rate?
That's correct.
Okay.
If you also stay on page five for a moment, it's interesting to note that the six cents increase in the rate, all of that is attributable to those reductions the council and town meeting approved last year in our long-term planning ventures, being capital reserve, expenditure maintenance trust, and funding overlay through surplus. And this is the first of a multi-year process to return those to customary funding levels. The operating budget actually has a three-cent decrease impact on the tax rate for FY11.
Okay, that brings me to my next point, was that on page two, we're showing a 2.44 percent increase in the operating budget, but it's a three-cent decrease.
It's a three-cent decrease because we have some anticipated increases in revenues in motor vehicles, interest earnings are relatively flat, we have some increase in highway gas tax revenues from the state of New Hampshire for FY11, which actually minimizes the increased amount to be raised by taxes. The amount to be raised is up minimally from FY10, however, we are anticipating a 1 percent increase in our assessed valuation, which will more than compensate for that increase in expenses needed for Article Six.
Okay. And the only other mitigating factors that would cause us to miss our goal of no greater than a 2 percent increase in the town portion of the tax rate are two more articles that will be at town meeting, fact-finder reports, and any citizens petitions that come to you or to come to us before February 2nd.
That's correct.
And anything else that can happen on the floor of town meeting?
Citizens can always increase the budget or decrease the budget on the floor of town meeting, but as far as the budget being presented, those are the current variables, two fact-finder reports to be reviewed by the council and costed out.
Right.
And of course, as you mentioned, any petition warrant articles submitted prior to February 2nd.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions or clarification needed from the council before we go to the public to get their thoughts on this? Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. It is on the proposed FY11 budget. There's copies up there if you need it, in terms of what Dave just took us through. So we're very interested in hearing from members of the public. That can include members of the budget committee who happen to be members of the public as well, if they want to speak individually. So anyone who's here who wants to speak on the proposed budget, feel free to come forward, grab a seat, a microphone, tell us who you are, where you live, and what you'd like to tell us. Yes?
On the town council budget, there's an increase of 740.98 percent. It says health insurance. Does that mean that the councils are getting health insurance?
No, the health insurance was from a previous line item from the previous year's budget. That increase in the town council item simply reinstates the stipend due to the town council, which was removed last year because of economic conditions.
How much do they get a piece?
$2,000, and the chair receives $2,500.
Okay, because it's not clear from what's in the budget.
In the printout, where it says "health insurance" underneath it.
Right, those are items which were not funded in this year's budget as a separate line item. That's why they don't show any corresponding numbers to the right of those titles.
Thank you.
Dave, just to be clear, the council members do not get health insurance?
Well, that's correct.
All right, make sure that's very clear.
Well, that was a question I had.
No, that was the question. We do not get health insurance, and the taxpayers don't pay a dime for our health insurance.
Thank you.
Yes. You can quote that, the press.
You can offer to put that in.
Other members of the public, that was a good question. Okay. Tom, you felt obligated to say something, right?
Yeah. Tom Dolan, 19, Isabella Drive. I don't suppose you've had an opportunity to discuss this in public, because it was brought up at the last meeting, but it had to do with the funding for road construction should the bond fail. I would urge, as a private citizen, I would urge you to consider giving yourself, or giving, I should say, giving the community an option to vote on road construction, or some small amount of road construction at the town meeting, should the bond fail on Tuesday's vote. And as such, you may want to consider an additional warrant article for somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000, which would be somewhere between three and six cents impact on the tax rate. And if the bond for the road does pass, then as you would traditionally recommend to the voters, to vote that warrant article down in the presence of a passed bond, or if it does fail, then at least the voters have an option to have some amount of money in the budget to keep up with the roads. Thank you.
Okay.
Mike, can I ask, Janos, what would $200,000 do for you?
One-fourth of $1 million would do, but... With the cost of road construction, for all road reconstruction is approximately $1.5, $1.6 million, so $200,000 is still a token. Right now, if the article will fail, we have probably $40,000 for road construction, which is absolutely nothing when you look at it. We have, we will have in the budget for road maintenance that we are using state block money, and that's for shim and overlay, repair the guardrail, crack sealing, striping, that's what goes under that line item. But for road reconstruction, we would have absolutely zero. So I would strongly recommend that we would have an article if the bond fails, and in the past, we had $500,000 for road reconstruction if the article fails. And I think one year was dropped down, maybe, I think, to 250, and last year, I think, was not proposed. I will still go and shake as many hands I can, and I will still promote and recommend that this is the way to go. We really need to spend the money for road reconstruction to keep up with the program. We reduced the road program from 1.5 to 1 million, but because of economic situation right now, but it's very important that we don't jeopardize that program. And I, again, hope that we will pass that, but if we don't, it's necessary to put some money into the road reconstruction.
How many, how many times have we proposed the bond? Can you recall? Is it...
This will be the fourth one right now.
And to this point, to this point, you've been successful three times?
We were successful to do this, yes.
Okay.
And again, I think majority of the residents realize that it is important to keep their roads, and then we're able to, you know, take a little bite every year out of, you know, $25 million that we need for road construction. But putting absolutely zero, you know, $40,000 would be pretty disastrous for the program.
Yes.
Dave, if I'm not mistaken, each year that we've done the bond, we've had a companion warrant article for town meeting each year?
Except for last year.
We didn't do it last year.
That's correct.
Okay. So in the past, we did it based on an amount that we would have normally put in the budget as a line item in the budget. So do we have an amount? I mean, I heard 200's been mentioned, but...
Well, I think last year, Janos basically said that if we were going to only put in that small of a warrant article, if it didn't pass it, my recollection was that what can you do with that small figure? It would...
I think, I think, you know, $500,000 is at least something that I can do one road and do something. $200,000 for reconstruction is a very small amount. And to, and take that money from maintenance straight to do some reconstruction, that doesn't give us any for shim and overlay, necessary stuff that we have to do it every year.
So what's a $500,000 expense item on the tax rate?
16 cents.
16, see, I can't support 16 cents on the tax rate for one year. And if the figure's 500,000?
What's the bond?
1 million.
Bond's a million, so the impact is about $120,000 with interest the first year.
So 4 cents?
Yeah, it's about 4, about 4 cents.
I can't support 16 cents. But I...
If the council wants to consider it, you'll have to make a decision that's tonight or the 18th.
On the 18th? We could make a decision on the warrant article.
We can bring back the information as to what you've done historically as far as an alternate warrant article. I think, my recall is, it's 400 one year and 200 the next, and none last year, but I need to go back and freshen up.
I believe that's correct. It's not been 500,000, it's been 400 and lower. Nice try.
No, we used to have 5, I was just saying, we used to have $500,000.
You used to have 500 in the operating budget.
Right, no, I'm talking about the companion article.
And then we went to article, and we put 200,000 as a backup.
Yeah, I, it's a good top from me speaking, for myself. It's a good topic to discuss. I personally want to stick to the goal that we gave Dave, which is no more than a 2 percent increase in our town portion of the tax rate. We all can read and understand that that, you know, there'll be a higher increase on the school side for obvious reasons, I mean, based on how their budget works. So if, I'd prefer to see something come back on the 18th with what we've done historically and what the tax rate consequences would be relative to the goal that we gave Dave. That's me personally.
I'm playing with that.
What do you guys think?
I pretty much agree with that. I just don't want us to shirk our responsibilities to do some level of maintenance and repair of roads. I think that we cross into, I mean, I'll support the bond, that's why we put it out there, but I think we cross into the realm of maybe being negligent if we have nothing on there for the voters to choose from. And if the voters on Tuesday say no, knowing they have an opportunity on Saturday to say yes or no to something, then I'm okay with that. If they say yes, I'm fine with, you know, being the person at town meeting who says we don't want to do this other one then, and make sure we all, you know, that's the way we've, yeah, that's the way we've done it the last few years. I think that's a good system. We did it, we did that, went to that system in better economic times for obvious reasons.
And that's why we pulled last year.
And why would we kind of abandon it in worse economic times? I mean, I don't think we want to completely neglect our roads. Times are tough, but we don't want to make things worse.
I just think the figure, the hard-to-digest part, I'm not against putting in a warrant article on for that, because both could fail.
Yeah, but let's come back on the 18th and have a number and have like some analysis behind it, and what we would expect, and not just have a, like a quick thing right here and say, yeah, bring back a warrant article for 500. I wouldn't want to do that. I want to hear some analysis on it.
Yeah, and to add to what Councilor Farmer was saying, if we stick with our directive to the town manager, I believe the tax, 2 percent would put the tax rate at about $4.74 if you increased it by 2 percent. So that would mean we'd only have like another 3 cents to work with.
Yeah.
And $34,000, $35,000 per penny?
Oh, 34.
So I guess it's only about $100,000. So we need to take that into consideration, what we have to work with here, and whether we want to, so, I agree, let's see what Dave comes back with and have those numbers, and then we can propose an alternate warrant article if the bond fails. And if the bond passes, we could, just on the floor of town meeting, say we no longer support this vote against it.
Dave, maybe it's my memory, I thought that companion article had a clause in it that said if the bond passed, it immediately is withdrawn. Am I wrong?
You need a motion and a second. The voters, the voters on Saturday can do what they want, regardless of what happens on Tuesday.
Right.
So in theory, they can approve both.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, but that was the understanding that if the Tuesday, if the Tuesday bond passed, then the Saturday one would be tabled, and it has been in those two times it was presented.
Yeah, I don't think you can add a, like a clause. I don't think you can do that.
Okay.
I think it has to go through normal procedure.
Sounds like a consensus, Dave, so on the 18th.
Take care of it.
General public, additional comments on the FY11 budget? Okay. So Dave, just, I hate to put you on the spot again, but what action are you looking for us to take tonight relative to what you've presented? Anything, or do we just...
Nothing at this point. I'm presuming the council will consider to have a bond public hearing on the 18th.
Yeah.
At the end of that process, we'll go back and recheck with the council. As of that time, here's the budget we're looking to post for the final public hearing, see if there's any adjustments at that time.
So you have the highway reconstruction bond under old business, so are we going to take that up at that point?
That's the time I need direction, whether you want me to post for that public hearing.
Okay. Okay.
I think the other two.
All right, so that means we can go into the public hearing on ordinance 2009-06 relative to the creation of the planned unit development process.
I'm recruiting myself for reasons stated prior.
So at our previous meeting, we requested changes to the ordinance. Specifically, we directed that any potential land use is currently not included in the chart of uses in the zoning ordinance be included only after approval of a zoning ordinance amendment by the council, which is the current process. Staffs reviewed the proposed ordinance and implemented the council's directive by removing the former section 2.8.6.2, which previously authorized the planning board to consider uses not currently included in that same chart. Previous section 2863's been renumbered as 2862, and also reference to variance planning initiatives, as we mentioned at the previous meeting, has now been added to the purpose section in 2822. We have received an attached revised ordinance showing those changes. Andre?
You explained everything that I was going to explain to the board very clearly.
Did he nail it?
Very clearly, so I have nothing more to add, other than we came back with what the town council suggested.
Yeah, I didn't explain anything. I read what Dave gave us.
I wrote with Andre told me, so it's a full circle.
So everything is fine with the word.
But basically, this threehash, at the last meeting, three ordinances, I should say, two ordinances were presented, as well as the permitted use table, or use table corresponding to the both of zoning amendments. The Gateway Business District was approved by the town council and was moved, advanced forward. The concern with regard to the planned unit development ordinance were two items. One, some clarification put into the purpose statement of the planned unit development that would allow the planning board to make reference to the Town of 1004 master plan, the small area master plan, and other long-range planning documents as a guidance in the land use aspect of PUD planning process. So that will, those documents will always be basically the template for which they will make their decision. The other item which you covered, which was wording in the permitted use table, item 2.8.6.2, it previously stated that any use not listed in the table as permitted uses may be considered by the planning for inclusion in the PUD master plan if it's determined to be in compliance with the purpose and intent of the section, or the purpose and intent of the underlying zoning district. That section was removed, and as was stated, that if there was a use that's not identified in the use table, that we feel that, at least the planning board who initially hear that feels that it should be considered, they would have to go through their normal zoning change process, meaning that the planning board will hold a public hearing, make recommendations to town council on a prospective change. Town council will then hold a public hearing prior to making the decision on whether or not to adopt that change. So those are the two changes that were made, and so the decision tonight would be, if everything is what the board would want to move forward with, is to adopt this ordinance, and also adopt the use table, which is, corresponds to both the Gateway Business District and the PUD.
Any additional questions from my fellow counselors here before we go back to the public?
Just clarification, because I had brought it up to explicitly call it out as Town of Londonderry Master Plan, and I think what I read here does do that, but I just want to make sure we're not going to set ourselves up for any confusion when you're referring to the PUD master plan versus the Town of Londonderry Master Plan.
Now, and 2.8.2.1 specifically states that area of reference to a master plan in the PUD ordinance refers to the PUD master plan rather than the Town of Londonderry Master Plan, except where the latter is specifically referred to as such, and then that's why we make note of the 2004 master plan.
Okay, and 2822, which is the next section.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that that refers to the 2004 Town of Londonderry overall master plan.
Correct.
Okay. I have no other questions.
We can add that, Paul, as a contractual change if it's clear.
Can we, it might just be...
Isn't that a substantive change whatsoever? Dave's correct.
So maybe we could...
I can do that.
Well, I'll make that recommendation when we make a motion, assuming we make a motion.
So that wording would be the 2004...
Or Town of Londonderry.
Londonderry Master Plan, gotcha.
And then I don't know about the small area master plan, does that need to specifically state the 2009?
Small area, it doesn't hurt.
Yeah, I was going to say, just so we're really explicit, and then assuming we do another master plan, which we probably will do in the next year or two here, overall town, we'll just update the dates to refer to the new ones.
Gotcha.
Thanks, Andre.
So there would be the 2009 Town of Londonderry Small Area Master Plan.
Yes.
Dave, what would be involved in the future changing the dates in this ordinance? If we put 2004 and we put 2009 for the small area master plan, would that have to come back for a public hearing?
You can add wording to, or as amended.
The other one may not be amended, it may be a whole new plan.
It could be.
Is there, is there like language we could insert there that would... I mean, I think I'm fine with it coming back. When we change the dates, that's an opportunity to come back and revisit this and touch that specific thing, but it's also an opportunity that we can go back through the whole thing again. I don't know if that would be the intent.
It depends how the council wants to handle it. You can include language such as the 2004 Town of Londonderry Master Plan and/or successor plans, and that would cover it and not require it to come back. If it's not in there, then you should come back to revise the language once we redo the master plan, which I guess is not going to be that far away, actually, is it?
Yeah, it isn't, you know. So Paul, do you want to add wording like that when you offer an amendment?
Sure.
Yeah, so maybe we craft that and insert it in.
That's where we don't have to go back and...
We don't have to touch this every time we turn around.
So we don't have to every time, Mark.
Okay, any other questions before we go back to the public?
Uh, just a couple of comments. You know, in looking back at this and then looking at other things we've been talking about here in town, it's, you have to really realize, this isn't talking about just the airport district, the Jaxbridge Road, or the airport land. This is talking about other substantial parcels in town, correct?
Correct.
And I'm sort of surprised that, because looking at this, this can forever change the face of Londonderry, this ordinance. What we're doing right here can forever change Londonderry. Because I think at the last meeting, we heard that under the current ordinances, nothing like this proposes could be done under the current ordinance structure. If we adopt this, then there are several things... If we adopt this, then there are several things on several parcels of land around town that could happen as a result of what we adopt here tonight.
That's correct, and that's why the wording that we've added with regard to using the two thousand four master plan, the small area master plan, as templates for what's based those decisions on, on those parcels of land, is very important, so those decisions are consistent with our long-worn, long-range plans.
I guess I'm just telling, I'm saying to my fellow counselors as well, that when I look at this, this is probably one of the most sweeping changes in zoning ordinance that's ever been put in front of this council. In my six years here, in anybody's here, nobody, we have, we have done nothing approaching the scope of what this change brings about. Yeah, Art, I mean, do you mind if, I mean, Art's raising his hand.
No. Art, I'd like to share the planning board. Just wanted to add to that, because this is the way the planning board felt, and we've dealt this, with this for quite a while, and we kept hearing a lot from, from people, and I know when the Home Depot first went in, people weren't happy with that, and that was when we started looking at, you know, really to get, think outside of the box, the traditional three-box zoning method.
Yeah.
And that what we, what we wanted was something creative, because some of the creativity we wanted, we found that were encumbered by our ordinances, our zoning ordinances, and our regulations. So that's where you start making the changes to what, what people want, and this is much more comprehensive in the way of planning than the way the planning has gone on in the last forty years in, in town. And I think we're getting to the point where we've lost a lot of our land area. We still have a considerable amount, but at least what we have left, we can comprehensively plan in concert with both the town and whoever's interested in developing that property. It is, it is very sweeping.
I guess, I guess the, Art, and my question maybe, if I can, is, I know the planning board did a lot of work on this, you know, workshops and things like this. Do you, do you feel that the public really participated, or do you feel like the amount of change this actually brings about is fully understood?
Probably, to some degree, yes, and to some degree, no, and that's something we're going to have to work with the town as we go about it, because I think this is something new for us also, and it's something we're going to have to take very slow and very measured, so that people, people are with what we want to do. I haven't heard anything negative from, from people in town about it, and I've heard from another, a number of people saying, you know, this really, you know, maybe it'll keep Londonderry looking more like Londonderry, you know, the way people want it to.
It dawned on me, looking at a couple of other things that kind of just crossed over, you know, my desk over the last few weeks, and just looking at this and reading back through it, that we're not talking about just the airport, we're talking about potential for exit four A, which Derry seems to be trying to continue to generate interest.
Looking for A, looking at further down one oh two.
Yeah.
Even looking at areas of one, you know, twenty-eight, and also, I know on the master plan, it talked about this for that area that is both east and north of twenty-eight, because there's a substantial amount of land up in there also, and we probably.
Could this apply to what used to be referred to as the old Londonderry parcels? Are those parcels a hundred acres contiguous?
No.
I believe they're close.
It probably would be close, but other parcels could be combined with it to create such a thing.
I just don't think in that area that you have enough adjoining land in order to do that.
Yeah, I think you do.
No, you don't.
Well, you have, you have parcels that are occupied, that if I was a, if I was a big speculative developer, and I could convince the Cafe Teresa people to leave, and the Stratum Tire, and the, whatever the truck thing is, and I could put all those parcels together, you can get, I'm just looking at like, and then further down, you've got Woodmont, potential for Woodmont, so there's a lot, there's a lot here, that this really, this really changes, this is a game-changing ordinance.
And that's what we, and that's what we touched on at the last meeting on December twenty-first, when, you know, when we went through the whole process and the whole ordinance, is that, you know, this was going to go beyond, the PUD aspect of it is going to go beyond the Gateway District, that it would apply to those lots that are a hundred acres.
That's why you separated them out, so that it happened.
And we don't, we don't have a lot of hundred-acre parcels. We have more fifty-acre parcels that could be combined, but in the area that you're talking about, there would have to be a serious amount of collaboration of lots.
Serious development.
For, you know, for the area you're talking about, where the Berkshire Development was going to, or Old Londonderry.
Yeah.
You know, that, that wasn't a big piece of land. It was a good-sized piece of land, but I would think that the Truck Center, the Cafe Teresa, and about, maybe about twenty, twenty-five, thirty other lots would have to sell their homes in order to, in order to make that happen.
Okay, so. So you get kind of the gist of what I'm saying, though?
Yes.
That this is, this is sweeping, this is huge. This is, this is a game changer for how we do this type, how, how this type of development could be done in Londonderry. This changes all, this basically, and what triggered me on this was a statement made during the public hearing on the twenty-first, was that without this, the kind of things we're talking about just can't be done.
Correct.
Correct.
Right, wrong, or indifferent. I'm not, I'm not arguing that point at all. I'm just saying that without this, those things can't be done, so this changes everything.
Right, and it gives a town more control over areas of a hundred acres or greater.
So.
Town has more control on what could be developed there.
One of the things in here, it allows the planning board to waive the, some of the, some of the constraints on sites, which, you know, does it, is the parcel size one of those types of constraints that could be waived? So if somebody came to cobble together a seventy-five acre parcel and wanted to use this ordinance, does the planning board have the ability to waive that part, that parcel size portion under the wording?
No, I don't.
No, I don't think that, no.
I think it's pretty clear, or it's pretty clear in my mind, that they would have to provide, they would have to have a hundred acres, and if they only had seventy-five, they would have to therefore purchase twenty-five acres of anything that was contiguous to that property.
So, thanks, thanks, Art. Mike, that's just, I guess my question is to.
Before you leave.
Is to my fellow counselors, if they recognize the magnitude of what, what we would be doing.
I absolutely do.
And I, you know, I'm just kind of surprised, because we're not really hearing from the public.
Yeah, I recognize the same thing you did, having been on the planning board during the PUD process, which at that point was probably one of the most sweeping changes that we made, unpopular to many who owned land in the areas that fell under the PUD, because, you know, their view was, you know, it's America, and I should be able to capitalize on my land investment that I held, and now you're putting me under the restrictions of PUD. Nonetheless, the ordinance was approved, but if I'm not mistaken, like any ordinance, including this one, is sweeping and as game-changing as this one is, it can be removed as well, just like the PUD that I supported on exit five is likely to be removed, even though I don't want it to be removed, correct?
We, yeah, three years ago, we had the town council approach the planning board on looking at ways to remove that.
I wasn't one of those members.
No, we, we were not part of the councils at that, that time, yes.
Then I voted in favor of that.
And.
What I'm trying to say is.
This is kind of evolving from, from, from that, you know, those discussions that we had, because I think the PUD was probably necessary at the time to give us control because of where the momentum was going.
Yeah.
You know, we had more of the momentum as in favor of the town than, than with development.
What I'm trying to say is, these aren't in perpetuity.
I don't think there's anything in perpetuity.
Well, conservation easements are in perpetuity, depending on how they're written.
Go to court, and, I mean, it'd take a major ref, you know, to, to do it, but.
Right.
The probability of it happening would probably be very, very low.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to put a different spin on what, what Brian said is absolutely true. This is very, very significant, and most folks out there probably have no clue what this really means. You can cobble together one hundred acres of existing developed land, based on what I'm seeing, with empty parcels, and it can be done in residential areas, and most people, I don't think, really realize that. They're not making the connection. They think this is all commercial. It's not. It can be done in residential areas.
It is commercially oriented, but this is where the master plan that has to be developed is, I think, the key to the success of it.
Yep.
And I think it's the diligence that the planning board is going to have to do to affect what this allows.
Yeah, but.
And like you, you mentioned about zoning being in perpetuity. The zoning is obviously a tool for the government to use in order to make sure the land uses are such that bring about the effect that you want it to have.
Yeah.
I'm sure that back in the late sixties, early seventies, when they came up with the, or let's just say the late seventies, early eighties, when the town instituted the planned residential development at the time, that was a game changer. I mean, that was sweeping, and, and our administration took that out, and they said, you know what, we would rather take, use a cluster development instead of the PUD, PRD, because that's just the better tool to get to the objective that we want. And I'm sure that ten, twenty years from now, somebody else is going to come up with a new tool, so they're not in perpetuity. It's just a matter of using the right tool at the time, and I think this is the right tool for this time.
Yeah, you know, people have the ability to, right now, they have the ability to change the folks that sit up here who approve things like this in a relatively short time, and people who are not in favor of this type of thing can sit up here and form a consensus and direct the planning board at that point in time to remove this.
Correct.
Yeah.
Move it, modify it.
Right, exactly.
Because times change.
Yeah, not downplaying what you said at all.
No, I, I, no, I think this is a healthy discussion. I just want to, like, it, it kind of dawned on me a little bit differently.
Yeah.
After that meeting.
Change in philosophy, you know.
It's a complete, and it's an about-face on certain things. I'm not saying that's right, wrong, or indifferent. I'm just saying that that's what it is, and it's, it's, but you mentioned PUD. Can this be used on parcels to override the PUD?
I think it could, probably not, not, probably not as likely as, as likely, but I think there's, there's some potential where it could. I think it would be difficult at, at best. It's really designed for large, large parcels that could have a big impact on what happens there on the town.
Well, let me, let me point you, that's a good question, because that's kind of where I was going. Andre, if you can look at two eight five two one, I think that answers Brian's question. That statement there, the way I read it, tells me that if, if there were parcels that currently are in the PUD, and whether they're, well, actually, this one's for previously developed, under the requirements of the underlying zone, underlying zoning, so does that, does that section at all answer Brian's question?
Is the underlying zoning PUD restriction? Because I think, I really didn't think it is.
No, it could. I mean, it could. I think this, it's consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
With this ordinance?
This ordinance, correct.
So if I have a seventy-five or a hundred-acre parcel in a district covered by the PUD, I could come in under this and ask for the PUD-type restrictions to be set aside, because it fits this?
Yes, and there would be.
This is just conceptual, because that's all this ever is.
Right.
Yeah, and, and actually, when we looked at that, there's really only one parcel that, along the PUD zone, parcels that would fall into that, and that's west of one twenty-eight, along Route one oh two, that would fall into that. The rest don't come into, the rest don't measure up to that amount of land size.
Towards the Hudson line.
Correct.
That area.
Yeah, because that, yeah, because that's open.
Actually, two, yeah, that's two.
It's a large, it's a large acreage there. I think not enough, but they could put some together to, I think it'd be vicinity where the power lines are.
Which if somebody were to do something, say, residentially or commercially, that's somewhat what they can do now with the PUD. The PUD obviously presents a, or tries to encourage a camper-style development. What we're trying to encourage here is a mixed-use type of development, and I think both, I think both themes could be achieved, whether you use this or PUD.
I think the difference lies in where, if it was already developed under the PUD, if there was a portion of land that was already developed, complied with the PUD, and let's say there was land around it, that with that developed land, could make a contiguous hundred-acre parcel now. They could develop it, including that pre-existing development, as long as it met the spirit.
Correct.
If I read this correctly.
Right, the spirit, and then they would have to do.
Of what the PUD proposal is.
Yes.
Of mast, the PUD master plan is.
Right, and the master plan would have to represent the spirit and their intent and so forth.
And be consistent with the master plan and the small area master plan and so forth.
Okay, any additional questions? We're going to, we're going to come back to the council regardless.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, this is a continuation of a public hearing, so we are interested in hearing from the general public on this particular item. Just come on up, grab a seat, microphone, tell us who you are, where you live.
I'm here again. Pauline Karen, three six nine Mammoth Road. Could you name the parcels of land that presently qualify under the PUD?
I couldn't, but.
I think Andre can.
Well, while Andre's looking that up. Just make the point that there are known hundred-acre parcels, or more, hundred or more acre parcels, that would definitely be, fall into this, but it also allows, if there were two fifty-acre parcels, as long as the owners of those parcels.
Collaborate.
Collaborated and agreed to it, they could combine those. So there really is an infinite number of.
Okay, one of the questions I have is if, say, a person with a fifty-acre parcel in a commercial zone acquires a budding lots that are in residential, what does it qualify as? Can it go under the PUD? Does the agricultural residential change to commercial?
Art.
Art, rug, you're at the planning board. The, the underlying zoning stays the same. That does not change. So like, if it was a PUD, it could be a mixture of commercial and residential.
Correct.
But there'd have to be the setbacks and everything, as it exists now, and probably even more stringent, as far as commercial and residential that, that abut. So like, if it was on residential, the ideal thing to do in a PUD is that's where you want to put the residential, so that residential butts upon residential, and within the PUD, you get the residential, and also you probably have some mixture of residential, commercial, and then some commercial.
So with the amendment that we just made to the regulations, meaning that if anybody proposes a zoning change other than what's permitted by the underlying district, we'll have to come back to the planning board and ultimately up to the town council for a zoning change. So Art says, whatever the zoning district is now, remains, and what are the uses that are permitted or permitted, permitted by special use, special use or conditional use are the uses that are allowed. No other uses would be allowed.
Okay, thank you. Do you have the parcels that presently qualify?
I was answering one question at a time.
One clarification?
But to get to a point where, where I guess Consular DeMarco meant is that there are a lot of parcels in town, and I did not enumerate them. I can identify them on a, on a plan, but I didn't enumerate that there. I know there are about eight parcels in, I should say, nine parcels in town that are over a hundred acres, and then there's, there's quite a few parcels in town that are fifty acres, you know, that abut each other, so, I mean, there's, there are several, you know, probably between ten and twenty lots in town that if, by themselves or combined, will equal up to a hundred acres.
Andre?
Thank you.
One, I think one important point, and this would be for someone like you, Pauline, to just ask that question, is one of the other requirements, two eight five four, is these tracts of lands have to be serviced by public water and public sewer.
That's right.
That's a real important distinction between residentially zoned areas that have septic and, and private sewer.
It eliminates a lot.
Right. So.
Not only water and sewer, but, and if, if they don't have a water and sewer now, and they were to be brought to the site, it has to be consistent with our sewer facilities plan. So that takes that number from ten to, ten to twenty lots that are over a hundred acres down to probably a handful of probably below ten lots that will qualify.
If this ordinance passes, when would it be effective?
When it passes.
When it passes.
When the council approves it?
Yeah, because there's already been public hearings and workshops at the planning board, and now it's here for a public hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other members of the public, questions, comments, yes? Yes?
Jay Houli, 24 West Yellowstone Road. I don't know whether I just misunderstood a response from Art or misunderstood what this thing was doing all along, but if, for the sake of argument, you had 100 acres in an AR1 zone, something other than houses could go in there under this process, correct?
No.
No?
No.
Go ahead, answer that question.
Again, we just, we just went over as far as the underlying district, and I think that was Pauline's question, that said, could something other than what's permitted or permitted by conditional use or special use be put into us, put into that lot that's 100 acres? The answer is no, the underlying district controls. Now, if you have a lot that is half commercial and half residential, then obviously the commercial uses on the commercial side could take place, and the residential uses on the residential side could take place.
But the underlying does prevail?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, I didn't understand that up to this point.
It doesn't, it doesn't preclude the property owner from applying for a change in zoning.
Correct. Nothing.
So, you've got an adjacent parcel that's residential, right? Nothing precludes the property owner from coming in and saying, I'd like to rezone this 50-acre parcel, which is now currently zoned AR1, to C1, 2, or 3, or something. Nothing, nothing changes the ability to do that before coming back and wanting to do a larger development as part of this PUD concept with 100 acres of contiguous land.
But it would require rezoning otherwise?
Yeah. But that, I, I don't think anybody should leave with the answer to that question thinking that it's not possible to put something other than houses, because a zoning change can take care of that.
Without a zoning change.
Which is, which is anybody's right now.
Right.
Which, yeah, but, you know, often when you answer questions with the information, the full kind of thing is, is the answer.
That's why my presentations are so long initially.
Yeah.
Because I want to answer the full.
He wants to answer all of them. He's wondering which ones we'll figure out that he didn't answer this time.
So, I guess ultimately the answer is, well, no, the underlying prevails, but the underlying could be changed.
Yeah, the underlying could be changed. Yeah, that's why I wanted to bring that part.
And the change to the underlying zoning could be made contingent on a particular subdivision.
But that's a question of process. You can end up, the final product being something very different than what you initially would have been able to do there with a zoning change.
Can you say that one more time?
If you have 100 acres, it's AR1, you could request rezoning, or you have 50 in AR1 and 50 in something else that was contiguous. You could, at the end of the day, end up with something very different than what we would have otherwise anticipated was going to happen.
Subject to the change, correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, it's also good to bring out that that's exactly what you could do right now.
Correct.
Could apply for a change in zoning.
Correct.
That would go through the normal process it goes through now. Be heard by the planning board, come up to the council, and we'd say yes, no.
Correct. Other members of the public?
I saw John Michaels was looking like he was.
Anyone else? No?
No.
Okay. Bring it back to the council.
I would just like to repeat the comment that I made, so that Sean has the benefit of hearing it.
Sure.
I'll be brief.
He said it. I was thinking.
But we thought it.
You were shaking your eyes, no. I was just saying that at the start of this, when we started public comment, our public hearing on this, that it really sort of dawned on me after the 21st meeting, that this, right here, this single ordinance, we adopt this, we say yes to this change, this is probably the most sweeping change that we've ever voted on here. It has far-reaching effects beyond just looking at the Gateway Business District, which is the airport area. It applies to basically anywhere in town that you could come up with 100 acres. So, the potential is there that down the road, that land that's already being developed partially in the, in the POD, land at Jack's Bridge Road, any place where there's 100 acres and you could show that it's contiguous and you have willing property owners, parcels on 102 towards Hudson, which can total up to 100 acres.
Well, Brian, this, like you said, with water and sewer?
With water and sewer, so that probably restricts the ones in the direction of Hudson. But it opens up things for, like, the potential is there with land at 4A, because I think that's in the sewer facilities plan.
I believe it is.
And places like Woodmont. So, this is huge. This isn't, we're not just looking at a parcel of land at the airport. We're looking at.
All of one of there.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we all kind of had a sense of that before we said yes or no.
Paul?
Mike and I were just talking, and I'm, I'm somewhat confused by the question that Mr. Houli asked, because I was, if you look at Section 2851, I read that to mean that you could propose a PUD in any zoning district. And the things that are allowed in a PUD are listed in this table. So...
You, you look at.
I'm kind of confused as to what the underlying zoning would have to do with it. If you're proposing a PUD in any zoning district, residential or commercial or industrial.
Well, also, let me just point it to two areas, one being 2854, which is water and sewer, is only those tract of land which contain buildings that would be serviced by water and municipal sewer.
On the same page.
And are the tracts that could be considered. And then the change that we just made with regard to 2862, any uses that are permitted in the underlying zoning, just either by right, special use, or conditional use, at such time this procedure may be established, shall be considered permitted uses in the POD. So, is there zoning districts that will govern that?
We're still kind of hung up in underlying zoning.
Yeah.
Because it, because in, in reading that statement in 28521, it doesn't specifically say.
It says, uses that are permitted in the underlying zoning district.
Underlying's only, only when, as part of the PUD master plan. Now, this is something that the planning board and developer are going to go off and jointly develop a PUD master plan for a given piece, right?
Correct.
So, they're going to come forward with that. Previously developed portion of land is substantially redeveloped in a manner which is consistent with the spirit of the PUD ordinance. So, that starts telling me that, that PUD master plan, and in itself, becomes what's going to govern this.
We just took out.
It doesn't tell me, it, I can't see in here that it's worded that it restricts it to the current underlying zoning.
Yeah.
That's what you're looking for, Paul?
To me, it's very clear. Any use that are permitted in the underlying zoning district, either by right, special exception, or conditional use, shall be considered permitted uses in the POD. So, that's it. Whatever the underlying district is, if that's AR1, whatever the AR1 permitted uses, conditional uses, condition, or special use, are the permitted uses in that district. That's it. You can't go beyond that. You took out the provision that allow the planning board any flexibility of considering any other use. So, it's basically the, it's the underlying district that governs.
Okay. So, another way, maybe this is what we need, Andre. Are you saying that 286.2 overrides this table of uses?
It doesn't override. It just means that the permitted uses within that table uses for that, for the zoning district is, is what we move forward with. So, if.
I think there's a little confusion here at the moment. There is the underlying zoning, which is, which stays there. If it's part of a PUD, there's a master plan that has all the permitted uses on those three tables. So, there can be a mixed, a mixed use. So, it can, can change. You could put commercial. This would be according to whatever is developed as a master plan on, on, let's say, residential property.
All right. Let me try.
This is, this is, I think, where it gets a little.
Let me try it this way. He asked a question. If we have 100-acre AR1 parcel.
Yes.
What can be developed there? And the answer was only residential, and we're saying that that's not what this says.
No, no. It's both residential and commercial, and it goes by the permitted uses that are on the table. And it has to be according to those uses that are on the table and what's developed as a master plan before anything can happen.
I think, I think I understand some of their confusion.
Okay.
It's the, it's the use table that is confusing. And, and their use table, and I even hate to do this, because I have to bring, we have to bring this back, but the use table doesn't correspond with the change that we just made in the, in the text of the, of the, of the ordinance. We removed that ability to allow uses that are not in the underlying district. If they're, if they're, if they want to, if a developer wanted to use a use with the underlying district, they would have to come back to the planning board and subsequently to the town council. The way this table reads is that basically all the, all the uses, if it's a P4 or a P5, and the P4 and P5, this distinguishes between those uses that are allowed in the Gateway District and those uses that are allowed in the, in the, as part of a PUD master plan. I just want to make sure.
So, Andre, should, should the column which says PUD be eliminated from the chart of uses? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
I think that's got to.
I think I can shed a little light.
Are you on the planning board?
No, but I think, you know, in, in, you know, try to steer you to language.
Okay. Do you want to?
To try to.
If you'd like.
Yeah. I'll try. My name's John Michaels, 11 Nutfield Drive. There are a number of different things here, and we're, we're confusing a bunch of them. The first thing is, take the, the questions before. Something says AR1, and say it's commercial 1, okay? As a matter of right, you can go and do whatever is permitted in an AR1 or commercial 1 on that piece of property. That's an absolute right, okay? Now, when you go in for a PUD, the PUD has a chart of uses, which is the chart we're going to next.
Yeah, 44 different uses.
That chart of uses are permitted uses with approval of the planning board, which is very much different than an underlying permitted use. We have on the, on this list, a whole slew of, of items. You know, you go down through, you know, manufacturing light. Well, if I want to do light manufacturing, and I come in a place by Jack's Bridge Road, you might say, that's fine. But I may want to put in a daycare. And the planning board can say, that's not a good use. So, the, the PUD listing is a listing of things that a planning board could approve, doesn't have to. The only things that the landowner, as a matter of right, can do is what's the underlying zone. If I have AR1, that's all I, as a matter of right, can do.
So, so I think, John, if, that, that gets us to, I think, the answer maybe that we're given is they can do whatever the, they have a right to under the underlying zone.
Absolutely.
Okay? But you put those, put those two together now.
Right.
The underlying zone's there, but the planning board could look at that table of uses and let them do something on this AR1 piece that wouldn't normally be allowed. The planning board could allow them to do it.
They can allow a store underneath the, something. They can, they can allow a mixture.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Please.
So, that's what we're trying to get cleared.
Let's get back to the initial question regarding, can another use take place in the district other than what's permitted in that zone? If you look at the use table, for PU1, they're labeled P5 in a PUD district, and I don't know if yours is color-coded, but it's in blue. You have ones, permitted uses that are related, labeled P5s or P4s. Those P4s, permitted uses are only allowed in, are uses that are allowed in the Gateway District, are limited to the Gateway District. And those that are labeled P4 as part of a.
In P5? You just went through P4. The gateway is the P4?
The gateway is part of where the underlying district is not gateway, or I should say the P, the P5s. The P4s are, are the permitted uses within the Gateway District, and the P5s are the permitted uses in district, not associated with the gateway. If you look at the corresponding uses, if you go down AR1 district, and you see agricultural as a permitted use, you'll see a P5. You see assisted facilities, that's a P5. Backlot, multifamily, single family, there's all P5s that will be allowable in the permitted use. When you get down to the cultural uses of performing arts, that changes to P4. When you're looking at assembly and repair, packing, that goes to P4. Bed and breakfasts are allowed in the AR1 district, so that's a P5. You go to the next page.
Got it.
You go down, you won't find one P5 on that particular page, because those are all, so.
Okay.
What we tried to do was correspond those uses that are either permitted, permitted by conditional use or special use, allowed in the P, the P4 section.
That's the way I understood it to be until Jay asked this question, then it was.
I want to make sure. But there's, there's another issue that got mixed in at the same time, was if you're taking an existing residential area, you can combine acreages. First of all, you'd have to get, you know, if it was a bunch of houses, you have to get everybody to sign on. But the more important part is that the planning board considered at one point that if we were going to allow any lot that'd been developed to use, they said, in effect, it's 2852.1, anything which has been previously developed as part of the underlying zone, the previously developed portion must be substantially redeveloped. So, if you have a, let's just take it, you have a warehouse on 20 acres of land, you got 80 next door, you can't just pick up that 20 acres and say, mm, now I'm going to have a, a PUD. You have to substantially do something with whatever is there, and it has to join in with the master plan. And one of the parts with the master plan is they have to be connected with roads, they have to be architecturally the same, they have to be, it, it has to all join as a, as a one. So, you can't, you can't really just pick up something next door and add it and do nothing, because that, that doesn't qualify you as, as land.
Okay. We got to where we needed to be, which is important, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. The devil was in the details. Footnote four and five. There it is. Okay. Other questions from the public? Because we're still in a public hearing for this. Okay. Back to the council. Any additional questions or clarification needed before we move on this?
Just a more procedural question. I believe this has already been made as a motion in the last meeting, and we just continued it, right? So, technically, that motion is still on the floor and had been seconded.
Yeah. Is that correct, Dave?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Check the minutes.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
I think we already have one.
Oh, okay. Then I'm looking.
Chairman, move the question.
Yes. Okay. Move the question. All those in favor of passing ordinance 2009-06, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As amended.
As amended. Excuse me.
As amended.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. We have a public hearing for ordinance 2009-07, relative to amendments to the zoning ordinance associated with the Gateway Business District and the planned unit development process. And Andre, is that specifically related to, to this?
Correct.
Okay. So, folks, that's related to Section 2.2, new section 2.2.2, which is the use table.
Okay. Can we just beat that to?
Well, yeah, but.
Why, let's just.
Let's go through the motions. Any questions from the council relative to that section, which is essentially the use table, before we go to the public? We'll go to the public. Any members of the public who want to speak on ordinance 2009-7, which is relative to the use table that's going to go along with the Gateway Business District and Planned Unit Development Process? Back to the council. I don't know if we have a motion on the floor for this one.
I don't think we do.
No, we.
No, we tabled it.
Okay.
So, I make a motion to, to open, well, we just tabled it, right? I think that's what we did?
Did you table it or continue?
No, we didn't.
Continue the hearing.
I don't, the hearing, we continued the hearing.
Okay, so we just need to bring it to a vote?
Right.
But let me ask you a question. Was that one ever read?
No, I don't think it was. That's why, let me just read it quick and submit it.
It was a motion to continue the hearing, it was not a motion to adopt at this point.
So, it has been opened.
It was read.
It was read. You read it, Sean.
Yeah.
And I seconded.
Yeah, it was read.
And then, and then we completely take that and continued the hearing.
So, there should, so there should be a motion whether to adopt or to not adopt, just to keep the record clean.
And was, was there any amendments done on the table?
No.
None were necessary.
Okay.
None were necessary.
All right.
So, it was read, so we need a motion to adopt.
So, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance two thousand and nine dash seven relating to amendment to the zoning ordinance associated with the Gateway Business District and the Planned Unit Development Process.
My second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to come out of the public hearing.
So moved.
I second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? We are now out of public session, public hearing, excuse me, and we'll move on to public comment.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andre. Thanks for bearing with us there. And thanks to the planning board, too. You guys put a lot of work into this. Thanks for helping us understand it.
Good job, everyone.
Any public comment?
Al Baldassal, Forty-one Hall Road. I am here on public comment and, first of all, I was hoping I was put on your agenda, on your calendar, so people would actually see this on what was going tonight. So, apparently it's not on your agenda, because I thought that was taken care of a couple a week and a half or two weeks ago. But anyways, that's enough. Dave, I want to thank you for your help on this petition. I'm about ready to move forward here. I came here today under chapter thirty-nine of the, you know, RSA chapter thirty-nine. I'm moving a petition here. And the petition I have moved in my hand is signed by twenty-eight local residents on that want to vote on marriage, on defining marriage between a man and a woman. This is not whether you support gay marriage or you're against marriage. This is just moving a petition forward to go on to the Londonderry Town Ballot and a non-binding resolution where they have an opportunity to vote whether they support marriage between a man and a woman or they don't support it. And I'm bringing you twenty-eight signatures, which I personally got myself from registered voters and understand the charter and everything else, that it has to be verified and all that good stuff. So, I would like to take these twenty-eight signatures and present them in accordance with the RSA and the town charter to the town council. Now, what my hope is, in accordance with the charter, is the town has an opportunity tonight, okay, to vote, to put this out, to move forward with it, or to say that I could go back and get, you know, either five percent, it would be mandatory, or forced to be on the ballot. I'm hoping that you would save me a lot of time and energy because of the holidays and with the RSA, I believe I would have till Monday, within the sixty-day period, to get the signatures there. And so, that's why I'm coming forward this evening, to hope that you would say, okay, twenty-eight people voted, signed this petition, that you move forward and say, let's put it on the ballot. Let the people have, at Londonderry, have an opportunity to tell the state representatives and the senator and the governor that they want an opportunity to vote on Representative DuMayne's constitutional amendment that defines marriage in, in the state of New Hampshire. And I leave myself available for any questions.
Okay. Dave, just so that we get the proper procedure laid down, citizens can present petition warrant articles to the town. You mentioned it earlier today as part of the budget public hearing, and the deadline for submitting those is February second. If the issue is not a budgetary matter, which this isn't, then the town charter, as approved by the voters, designates this body as a legislative body to act on these types of matters. Upon receipt of the petition, the proper process is to transfer that petition, which we just received tonight, to the supervisors of the checklist, who would validate that those twenty-eight signatures are Londonderry registered voters.
That's correct.
That is the proper way we should handle this.
That's correct.
So, if we, if we follow the proper procedure and transfer this over to the supervisors of the checklist, just to make sure that these are legitimate registered voters, which is standard stuff, then we would not decide on this matter tonight, but decide on it at a future meeting, such as the January eighteenth meeting, after the supervisors have reviewed the signatures.
That's correct. And, and just to be very clear, Al, okay, as I attempted to inform you about with our council and town charter processes as adopted by the voters, the council does not have an option of putting this to the voters with twenty-eight signatures on it. So, your request is something outside of the council's authority. The town charter, which is approved by the voters, is very clear. If there's a referendum petition to be presented to the voters, the petitioners have to submit a petition to the council with at least one percent of the registered voters signing that, which is about a hundred and seventy voters here in town. And if the council takes action with you're not comfortable with and you want to proceed that or move that to town meeting, you have to submit a referendum petition with five percent of the voters or about eight hundred and fifty signatures.
Right.
Okay. Under this, under this, what the process, what this is, and we'll bring this to the supervisors, they will, they will confirm that there are at least twenty-five registered voters, and then it comes back with the council for action. And at that point, the council can approve it, they can deny it, they can table it, they can take the same actions that the voter at the town meeting could under a different form of government.
Right.
And that's where this petition ends, is with this body right here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If you want to, if you want it to go to the voters, then you need to submit the initiative petition, knowing that if the initiative petition is submitted and the council essentially approves the request, it stops there as well, because there's no reason to go to it for a referendum unless you're agree with their, with their action.
Right.
So, I'm presuming if the council does something you're asking them to do and they do that, then you're really not aggrieved to bring it to town meeting. See, the process is a little bit different under our form of government than what you'd find under a traditional town meeting form of government.
That's under the one percent. Am I right on per the charter? But then the five percent, is there a different rules on the, under the five percent because of what the RSA states on the five percent with ten thousand voters or more versus, and then matches should match up with our charter? Is that correct?
No, it's, it's an entirely different process. The RSA presumes that there is not a town council form of government and you have a traditional town meeting form of government, which means town meeting votes on the budget, votes on resolutions, and votes on ordinances, votes to purchase and sell land. The voters in Londonderry decided to streamline our government over ten years ago, invested all those powers, with the exception of a budget, with the town council. For the purposes of petitions, unless you fall, unless you follow the initiative process,
Right.
Okay? The town council is the legislative body, town meeting is not.
So, Dave, let me try this. If, if Al truly wants this to go before the voters, not these five people here, okay, he's got to do seven point two.
He's got to do seven point one first.
First.
And if the council...
Says no.
If the council says no...
Right.
Then it goes to the five percent and then it goes to the...
What if the council says yes?
Well, then...
He doesn't get the voters to vote on it.
That's correct.
What if I come in with the five percent all at once? And the reason why I'm doing it this way, just so you know, I watched the council there on a social issue here in Londonderry, okay, with gambling, where five of yous took that. I brought in twenty-eight signatures figuring, well, since we set a precedence here in the town, this is a town thing for Londonderry voters to get an opportunity to vote on a social issue that they either support up or down. This is the reason why I brought this forward here to you, because you already set precedence on what you did at the airport, whether putting something out and let the people vote on something that's serious. This is another way to, you know, that I wanted to comply with the way you'd done business. That's why I came here tonight with the twenty-eight and I probably could have got seven hundred, eight hundred, just on a Sunday morning.
Technically, if you wanted to follow what you just said, you'd have to convince one of us to submit it as, as a resolution.
That's what I was hoping this evening, to do that and probably get a vote before I go out, because I'm going in session January sixth, you know, and, you know, because I'll have to be out every day until Sunday, which is no big deal, to get the, you know, at least get the five percent so I can turn it all in at once.
So, then, Dave, what, what Al is trying to accomplish, if, if he's going to accomplish anything tonight, is to get one of us to, to say, we want to put it on the ballot for a Tuesday vote and have the rest of us, or a consensus three to two, whatever, go along with that. Is that, is that even a possibility?
I'll review the charter again. I don't believe it is.
I think it'd be a violation of your charter.
Right. To do it tonight.
The council, that, okay, so let me ask the question a little differently. Al, I have to tell you, Al, I'm going to ask the questions, but I'm not going to...
Right.
I'm not going to say I, I would do this for you.
I respect that.
All right? But the council can't put a non-binding referendum vote on the Tuesday ballot if it wishes?
That's the directive I've been given, but I will, well, that's the advice I've been given, but I will go back and reaffirm that in the morning.
How did that happen with AES? Did they get enough signatures? I thought the town council, I thought the town council...
I can tell you, I don't know.
Our, you, history, you were there.
I think the council agreed to put it, put it on, because they had substantial number of signatures anyway.
And they weren't verified, they were, that the signatures, there was problems with the signatures. So, the council turned around and voted, if I'm not mistaken, the history of that vote, put it on themselves.
Now, I have just some clarification questions. Okay. Al came in with twenty-eight signatures.
Right.
We, through our charter, cannot vote to move this forward because why?
Because to put it on the ballot as a referendum petition needs first an initiative petition with one percent of the voters, and then if the petitioners are agree with the action, they come back with a referendum petition, which is five percent of the voters, and that automatically goes on the ballot.
So, you understand how this works, Al?
Oh, I understand fully. I looked at the charter.
That if you, your next recourse is to come in here with the, the hundred and seventy signatures, and then we have to address it one way or the other, right? At the one percent?
Well...
And that's to put it on the ballot to let people vote?
Just vote on it, right?
Oh, actually, no, no.
No, we vote on it as a town meeting.
Right. But if he comes in with the eight hu... We vote on it and make the decision, not the voters.
Oh.
Okay. But we could make the decision to put it on as a non-referendum, like they did with AES?
I've been told by our town attorney that it's not authorized under our charter.
Was it?
We have a budgetary town meeting.
Ooh. See, I know what's on there.
Was AES done legally then by the town or?
The vote.
By...
I think the town council, I think you guys as a town council voted it.
Well, hold on, back up the truck a second. We have, we have budgetary town meeting on Saturday, but Tuesday is budgetary town meeting.
Is, is still...
It's the school and we also vote on...
And, on our, it's still budget. It's all still budget. It's all a continuation.
I understand now, all right.
But I do remember, I mean, long time history in this whole thing, I do remember going into the polls on, on, on budget town meeting and voting on a non-binding referendum about AES.
It definitely was, it definitely was that question before the voters.
And I think it failed by like five hundred votes. It was like twenty-five hundred, because speaking of the devil, I read the press article today in the Dairy News, and it was a non-binding referendum and our march was on our march ballot. Now, I don't know if we can legally do that, but if he comes in with the eight hundred and fifty-eight signatures, or eight hundred and fifty-four signatures, does that mean we can't stop it? But it goes on the ballot?
If it come, if a referendum petition comes in, the seven point two, with five percent of the voters signing that petition, that goes for the vote at, at a town meeting to the voters.
Okay, so if you come in with eight hundred signatures, eight hundred and fifty-something signatures, it goes?
I understand that fully.
But if, we have the one seventy-one, we don't know if we can legally have the authority to put the referendum on the ballot?
It's my, it's my, the information I was given was that no.
Okay, and then we just vote on it?
So, so...
Similar to this. The council will have to take action on this...
Yes.
At a meeting.
Right.
Up, down, or table, whatever you want to do with it.
Adopt, defeat, or table that. He doesn't like it, he gets the one percent, adopt, defeat, or table, he doesn't like it, five percent onto the ballot.
Right.
Right, that, that's true. But per your charter and the RSA's, and, and like what you're saying with the information you're getting with the lawyer, it does not say that the council cannot vote to put it on there. That's why the attorney's, you know, what he says, you know, of course, is, is, is opinion, of course, but nowhere in the RSA, if you read it, or in the charter, does say you can't do it, because it's already been done in this town. That's why I wanted to make sure and why I came forward with this, you know what I mean?
Yeah. And some former council did whatever they did.
Just, just to be clear, I'm sure you know this, New Hampshire's not a home rule state.
Right.
So, the only authority the council has is what they, is set in state law.
Yes.
A home rule state says you can do anything you want, except what's prohibited under state law. We're not, we're not there.
Right. And this is something, just so you know, this is not just happening here. This is something that's like a plague that's going on in every town in, in city in the state of New Hampshire.
I like that term, a plague.
A plague?
Yeah. Let New Hampshire vote. So, it's been delivered to every town councilor.
I didn't say a movement. I don't think I call it a plague.
Well, I'm saying, this is, just because the people, I've gotten hundreds of emails from Londonderry residents, the residents, the St. Jude seniors that went to visit the governor, some of them refused to go in to see the governor because he, he signed that bill. Okay? So, this is an issue here for Londonderry that's very important to the people of Londonderry. That's why I took it on. Representative Dan DuMayne took on the constitutional amendment to move forward to let the people vote. And this here, like I said, basically, you know, I was hoping that the council could step to the plate and, you know, that's why you make the big bucks there as elected official, to make these tough decisions and say, well, let the people vote. We shouldn't have a say.
What were you telling me about the big bucks thing?
I know.
I don't think that...
I make my one dollar.
Have you even seen that yet?
Well, I make a hundred.
But, but Dave, just on, on their clarification, so Al understands, what is the timeframe on all of this?
Well, the timeframe is that, is, it's not a typical deadline like, like a budgetary petition. So, if, if you walk through the scenario, if the council does not approve this and Al submits an initiative petition of one percent, that's not approved, comes back with a five percent, then there are timelines in the charter, you've got to schedule a special election.
So, he has sixty days from the time he does this initiative to collect all his signatures, and is he in the window to make it on the March meeting at this point?
Oh, I have to walk through, but I, it'd be, I don't, I don't know. I don't think you could.
Actually, I think if I figured it out right tonight, it was my, I had till March eighth, which is the sixty days, by Monday.
But, but then we can't put it on, on March eighth, can we? At that point?
I don't think you can.
It would have to go to special election.
It's not properly noticed. You have to have time to properly notice.
The council has to hold a public hearing within thirty days of receiving a initiative petition.
So it would be a special election?
Which is not this step, and then, uh, the council makes a decision, and then the referendum petition must be followed, the time clock within thirty days after action of the council.
But, okay, so he has till March eighth to collect signatures, but if he came in here with the eight hundred and fifty-eight in a week?
Actually, no, I, I hate to, I don't have till March eighth because March ninth is the election. There's a sixty day, by the RSA, this is why I was confused, the charter versus the RSA. By the RSA, there's a sixty day window. And I figured it up from this Monday coming, if I got all the signatures from the different churches here in town just on a Sunday morning, and then brought it into your Monday, there's a sixty day window there, but then, I don't know if it's a sixty day from the, your next council meeting. Because I was prepared this two weeks ago, but I couldn't do it anything because your council meeting wasn't until tonight. Okay, for purposes of process, if it's a budgetary item, look at state law. Sixty day, okay. If it's not budgetary, ignore state law, it does not apply. I want to make sure the sixty window, day window is gone. It does not apply. Okay, good. That's right, any non-budgetary initiative petitions are governed by what was approved by the citizens of Londonderry in Articles seven one and seven two.
So can I ask a clarifying thing? Just to make sure I got it in my mind right, is, uh, This is a wonderful thing to, Not that it's gonna matter after, after March, but, uh, well, it will, because I might want to do something after March that's not sitting up here. But, on budgetary items, right, me and twenty-five of my good friends could submit a citizen petition to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go buy a what's it who's it's. And the council could vote up or down in support of that, but it would have to go on the, the Saturday town meeting.
That's correct, and that's RSA thirty-nine three, that's correct.
It's because it's got a dollar, It's because it's got monetary value involved.
And we're a budgetary, I, I, very well for me with the, you know, town process and everything else.
But, I mean,
But the timeframe due to the holidays and other stuff in your council meetings and everything put together, kind of a little,
So if he walked in, in two weeks with the eight hundred signatures, what would happen? Or the eight hundred and fifty signatures, just for?
That, that essentially would be step one.
And then we have to post it and have thirty days?
Step one is at least one percent, so you can come in with a hundred and seventy about, you can come in with two thousand, that's the first step.
Okay.
And if the council doesn't agree with the action being requested, then, uh, Section seven two A said, "The registered voters of town shall have the power to require reconsideration with the council of any adopted ordinance." That begins the second step
Which is our public hearing, it's awkward for the ballot.
With respect to putting the initiative before the voters.
Right, so we have to do the public hearings and put it on, okay.
That's correct.
And if we missed the window for our traditional March town meeting, it would have to be a special town meeting for?
It'd have to be a special ballot vote?
It'd have to be a special,
It'd have to be a special election because it would be a lot.
See, I wasn't sure about that, whether that was for budgetary or, and I wouldn't want to cost the taxpayers on something like this here to do a special meeting, so, you know, it wouldn't be right, and I have, you know, I don't vote for taxes or fees as it is, so why would I want to do that and cost the taxpayers money? That's why I'm hoping with the council there on the right vote, you know, let the people vote, because you're all, you're making the decision. Let the people vote here in, in Londonderry on the ballot, that's all you're doing. Not supporting up or down.
Okay, anything else? So the next step is we will have those signatures validated?
And that, and that petition will be on your January eighteenth
Agenda.
Agenda for action.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
So if you come in here, gee,
One last question. Uh, well, maybe I, probably be out of line, just like I would as a state rep to get a feel on a vote. Would it be out of line to ask, should I go forward and get people out getting the signatures?
I would just do what it says.
You see what I'm saying? Because I looked at the last vote in the presidents, and that's why I was trying to think, you know what I mean, on, do I, you know, get away from the State House to get this done, yeah? You know, the, or am I wasting my, you know, time? That's why I was trying to get a feeling tonight from the council. But thank you anyways, and I don't answer that.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Good evening, councilors, Marty Bovee, Three Tinkham Lane, citizen.
Much happier looking.
First of all, let me extend my congratulations to the council, if I know you're in the middle of budget season. Uh, and I want to tell you something that's really nice on this side versus that side. A lot less stress. But first of all, thank you for everything you do, I, I know what you guys are going through, I know how difficult the budget season is. And, uh, I certainly know when people get up here and take shots at you, who, who feel like five minutes up here justifies them telling you exactly what you should be doing for the whole year, when they have no clue whatsoever as to what you're talking about or, or the budget, so, I can appreciate you having to deal with those people, um, hopefully it'll be a minimum of them this year. But I'd like to comment about Representative Baldassaro's initiative here. As a, as a citizen of the United States, as a citizen of New Hampshire, I believe that the people, um, have a right to voice their opinion on this. Unfortunately, the state legislature has chosen not to take the action to give the right to the voters to do that. This is not a binding, um, vote that, that he's asking for, but certainly a important vote in regards to, um, the voice of the people. I encourage you as representatives of the people of Londonderry to give them the opportunity to voice their opinion on this particular issue. I myself will, haven't signed that petition, but I intend to sign it. I have other issues about this that I certainly will share at a later date, I'm not gonna bore you with them right now. And if you have a public hearing, I would be more than glad to come forward. But I encourage you to, uh, to accept this petition that Representative Baldassaro has brought forward, and, uh, take it in the means that it is presented to allow the people of Londonderry to be able to voice their opinion, which is being denied them by the legislature. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Any other public comment?
I, I think we need to talk about this just a little bit more, uh, tonight. And again, I'll tell you, Al, I'm not, I'm not saying I would support you on this, I don't have, I don't have the same viewpoint that you guys have, I do support the right of the voters to have an opportunity to vote on anything. So that's, that's different than like yes or no on this, this particular issue. But Dave, I'm just breezing through here real quickly on initiative petitions, seven one, and it's talking about the power to propose ordinances. So this isn't an ordinance that's being suggested.
Right, I raised that issue with, with our town attorney, and he says, for, he says he believes the intent is, is that ordinances should be interchangeable, interchangeable resolutions, uh, petitions, and, uh, he looked at that very clearly, and that was, that was his, that was his advice.
I asked the same question before the meeting began today, exact same question.
So I, I guess when I, when, when we get back to where we hear what the attorney's opinion, can he give us like a written thing where he tells us like where it comes from and references either pro or con, if we can do it, we can't do it? How do we, if, if we can, how do we do it, if we can't do it? Specifically referenced as to why we can't, so that we all have that as a part of an educational process as well?
Sure.
I, I just, I'm trying to find it hard how we could, and, and I'm not saying, this is nothing about giving you consensus of what I'm looking for. But I just want to make sure that we've done it in the past, we did it?
That, that's what concerns me.
When the signatures came in here, the council sat up here and actively listened to those people that came in here with those signatures, and they put it on the ballot as a non-binding referendum.
The school board put a non-binding referendum issue at, at my petition request with a couple of, with a couple of other people
Right.
On the school warrant a couple of years ago.
So I think there's precedent that we've done that.
That was voted on a Tuesday meeting, so I'm concerned that, that if we can and we're not, we're missing something, or we did in the past and we did it wrong, then, you know, I'm sure that there's, there's exceptions in school law that are a little bit different than what governs towns as well, I know that. So, so maybe they have a different set of leeways, but I'd like to see specifically why or why not.
Sure.
I mean, if, if Al comes in here with eight hundred and fifty-eight signatures,
There's a will.
That's, I, I mean, and, and I don't want to go down a path, but three to two up here over the SB, and we didn't want to get this,
That was what I was just gonna bring up.
Right, we didn't want to get the signatures because you guys made the determination,
Right, so how was it different?
And there was three hundred and forty-two people needed to get on a ballot to change our form of government. And if eight hundred people show up here and they'd like a chance to vote on this?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, I'm just having a hard time,
I can't sit here and say no.
Well, that's, that's why I'm having a hard time understanding why the answer is no.
Sure.
Because we have precedence of it being done on the town side, we have precedence of it being done on the school district side. This council, and I think perfectly within its right, put, uh,
The SB two?
The SB two question on the ballot for this March. Uh, and I think we were perfectly within our right to do that. So if we're within our right to do that, and these other things have been done, then why are we now told, no, we can't do this?
Just to differentiate, and I'll get that information for the council. Because I, I caution the council not to mix this issue and any other sense of the meeting issue with the charter provision. The charter provision that processes very clear in state law.
And yes, there are very specific provisions in the law about how to go about that, and I followed that, you know, you know, we all, I think we followed that to the T, and it's very well spelled out. I, I just, to me, if, if we're restricted from doing this, and that's the way it turns out, then, Al, I think that the State House has some work to do, because if, if, you know, as Dave said, we're not home rule, we're, we're run by how you guys put enabling legislation. But if it turns out that this council is powerless, right, wrong, or indifferent, to put this on a Tuesday vote, if we're powerless to do that, then that needs to be corrected at the state level.
Thank you, um, per Representative Bates, I was hoping he was gonna be here tonight, but I, you know, I had to call him and let him know that you had the other ordinance, I thought it was gonna be right up front in public information. But anyways, uh, a public comment. He's checked with the Secretary of State, and I'm giving you thirty in information. Apparently, there's seven towns with charters like us, which kind of take away the right of the people, you know, on their freedom of speech versus other towns, you bring the petition in, it goes through the process of RSA thirty-nine, and boom, you're done. This one here, get, the council has more authority than the people, because you can either make it or break it on the power, you know, the council per our charter.
I think I have a, I, I have another solution that doesn't have to rely on the state doing squat.
Right, I don't think the state needs to get into our business and, and our town, just like other towns are hoping that they don't.
Can we amend the charter?
Right, is it the charter that's stopping us from doing this if the right number of signatures coming in here?
I've seen it.
Or is it the state that's stopping us from allowing the non-binding referendum?
I don't think there's any state law which, which,
So it's our charter, the way it's written, is the problem here. That if eight hundred and fifty-eight people sign a petition, it's our charter that's saying you can't go on.
So, so to that end, this council, not, not the five of us here, but previous councils have amended the charter by putting an article on for Tuesday ballot to amend the charter.
But that can't take into effect for?
It wouldn't take into effect this March, but if it's a corrective measure that needs to be done, then possibly, then Dave, we have time to look at that.
But I still have a problem too,
Charter amendment?
With telling eight hundred and fifty people they can't vote.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And I would like to know if there's legal,
I'll check, I'm getting pretty close, I'll check. If you take a look at page twenty, I think it's twenty-seven or twenty-eight of the charter, and it goes from twenty-nine and thirty, I believe, and you'll see in there, don't tell you. It gives the presidents, it talks more about budgetary, then it goes into petitions and other stuff. It goes in exactly what Dave said, but I tell you, I don't tell you you can't.
But if we've done it already as a town?
That doesn't mean it was legal.
It may have been a mistake.
Right, but I'm just saying,
Previous councils have made mistakes.
Plenty of them.
Yeah, I know.
Airport contract, let's just go down the line.
Well, we don't need to get into that.
Well, you guys are getting into old stuff.
SB two.
Right now. You're mixing every, this old stuff together, let's stop talking about what the previous council did.
Then can we use this council here just for presidents, and I don't want to get in, I'm just trying to use it, and why? Let's use SB two on the presidents there, on putting that forward, that petition.
But that's clearly stated, Al, in the,
It's spelled out in the,
Charter, how you amend, how you make those terms.
Yeah, and if you go over, if you go over to the public library, they've got a whole series of books on there, on how you do all this kind of stuff.
I just haven't touched them yet.
Yeah, so if you go through there on how to do it for, for charter issues like that, on SB two or whatever, there's a whole series of steps, it's laid out like, it's cookie cutter.
I don't understand then, why we have Section seven one and the second section to tell them that they got a way to come over and grievous us because they don't like the fact that the hundred and seventy-one doesn't vote? And then, there's nothing, what, then all we do is just turn around, the council says, we support their amendment to, to vote?
That's, that's,
And then what happens?
Nothing. Well, we, we got,
Well, what, what happens if,
Dave to speak to our attorney, who gave us advice, if we're gonna disagree with an attorney right here in public, let's do it.
Well, I'm just trying to find,
I'm not going to do that.
I'm trying to find out, Mike, because,
So, so let's ask a question a different way.
Town manager gave us the process per the town attorney.
So let's ask the question a different way, and see if we, see if we come to the same answer, which we might. What body in town is vested with the authority to, to interpret the charter?
The county.
And I, and I know that's with advice or without advice, but, because I, I just, I'm, I'm just reading through this real quick, and it's creating conflict with me.
I mean, I, I just have a real problem that we have these three steps, and then they go out and they do the three steps, and they overrule us because, and then there's nothing they get at, you know what I'm saying? Why would we have written that in the charter, that if they,
Can you walk through that again? If they go through the three steps?
Okay, if they, if they, they come in with the hundred and seventy-one and we say no, I'm sorry, the two steps, okay. They come in with the hundred and seventy-one and we say no, then they have the option to go back and get five percent.
Right.
At which point, we have to accept it no matter what.
It goes to a vote, of the, of the people.
To the vote, so if they do come back with the eight fifty-eight, it will go to the vote of the people?
The only thing you do is you have a public hearing, I believe, and you schedule a date for the hearing.
Okay, so if the eight fifty-eight comes back, it goes right to the vote.
Goes right to the voters.
The one seventy-one is the one we make the decision? And can it still go to the voters, or that's just done by us up here?
Done by us.
Right, okay, so that's where the clarification,
They've laid this all out for us at the beginning of this meeting, he can get it before the voters by following our charter.
So he gets eight hundred and fifty-four signatures?
He doesn't want to.
I never said, first of all, council, I never said I didn't want to.
You want it quicker.
I'd like to correct this real quick, council. I never ever said I didn't want to, I asked out of respect, on presidents where there was done, that would save time and energy on even myself as a state rep who's going in session, who, this is very important to many people in our town, to see if you would take the opportunity, stand up that the people elected you, and make a vote, and let the people vote on something that says family values, that's what Londonderry's about here, okay? I've got hundreds of emails coming in, but if I gotta go out and work it and get the signatures, I'd be more than happy to do that. So I'm not trying to get out of anything, nowhere in your charter does it say you can't do it, and I, that's, I mean, disrespect or anything.
Alright, so,
I, I, I think,
May I?
Yeah.
So, apparently there was precedent set with how this non-binding referendum for AES, that's before my times, before I lived here, but apparently this current charter, or it was, been amended before that, but this current charter was used to do that. I'd be kind of curious to see what process was followed, we may not be able to reconstruct that. But,
Thought he's probably got it.
To the point that the, the chairman made, that's still past history. I'm interested in following what the charter says today. And if the charter says today what Dave outlined for us, that's what we gotta follow. Even if we all are in lockstep agreement on that, this is a good thing, we should give the people the right to do it, that doesn't mean we set the charter aside and, and say, well, there's eight hundred people in this room that want this, so forget the charter, we'll put it on the ballot, that's not, we can't do that. That's illegal.
What if eight hundred and fifty-eight people come?
But maybe there is a way that it could be done with this charter, and that's why, so,
And, and I'm not, I'm not arguing the point at all, I'm just looking at the specifics of Article seven. The specifics of Article seven are for citizens' concerns, initiative petition, referendums, and recall. That's for the citizens' concerns of how they could go about introducing business, the business of change to the town of Londonderry if we weren't going to do it. That's what seven is about. So what's the rest of it say about what we're supposed to be able to do? Right, and that's where I'm getting to, like, how did it go about that it was put on before? And when you roll up to like, I think it's three twelve, and that's where I'm kind of heading now. Because, uh, boy, I'll like, I tell you, when I, when I came in here tonight, I had no intention of being helpful to you.
I ran it over and over, I don't see what you have to say, she couldn't.
But under three twelve,
The state rep, and, you know, I know there's lawyers that, you know, that have done before, and now it's mine, so I don't know.
In three twelve, it's except as in herewise otherwise provided, the council shall, shall have all the powers conferred upon and discharge all the duties imposed upon town councils, town meetings, boards of mayors and aldermen and selectmen of towns by law, except the adoption of a town budget, which prerogative is vested in the budgetary town meeting. All officers and members of all boards, commissions and committees and vacancies shall be appointed by the council, so, that first thing, all duties imposed upon councils, town meetings, boards of mayors and aldermen and selectmen of towns by law, except the adoption of budget, that's a pretty broad catch-all statement. I would be hard pressed to believe that somewhere in the duties of all those folks, there's not the ability to put a referendum article on a Tuesday town.
Did you do a resolution to do that? If, would, to put it on as, I mean, and then we vote, I mean, that's what I'm just trying to find out is, it's, it's such a gray area of the authority there, that's, that's the worrisome, you know, I, I just, I guess where I'm coming from, Davis, I want to follow the charter, I don't have a problem with that, but if, if they come in with like four hundred signatures, and they don't hit the eight fifty-eight, you know, it just, I just feel bad, that that many people, that would be all it took for us, I'm just saying in, in, in size-wise, percentage-wise, that would have been all it would take for us to change our form of government, and we can't give them an opportunity to be heard, I mean, when you, when you start seeing four hundred, five hundred people in Londonderry start doing something, then, I wish there was a, I mean, I don't know if that's something we definitely look at as amending a charter. I, I don't want it, but don't get me wrong, I don't want this to be easy, because I don't want every social agenda item in the world coming in front of the council, it should be a, a little bit of a higher standard and a bar when we get into these social issues, because these are personal issues.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think any of us participated in, in the creation of the charter, but something looking at it objectively is pretty clear to me, one is that the voters decide that this council is a legislative body with the exception of the budget.
Okay.
The council, this, this, this charter also said, there's an escape clause where you can bring non-budget items to the voters. It's through Section seven one and seven two. Now, you can, we can discuss,
So seven one,
Section seven point one and seven point two.
So if seven one comes in,
Yep.
We have the ability at that point, if they've met seven one to put it? That was where I thought we'd get, no.
We just say yes or no.
Right, that's right.
And it's the five of us speaking on behalf of the community. And it's the five of us speaking on behalf of the community.
So the only way, according to the charter, for it to get on there is the eight fifty-eight.
Seven-point-one D is very clear. The council has a public hearing. Follow the public hearing, the council may pass said measure with alteration.
You got to get the answer.
Where it stops there, or you can deny said measure, refer petitions, the procedure refers, references in seven, seven-point-two. But Kathy, Kathy, my point is, is that if you feel comfortable with four hundred, which is two and a half percent, then if somebody feel comfortable with two percent or three percent, the framers, for some reason, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing them.
Right.
They said it's going to be one percent for the first step, and five for the second.
Well, I'm just.
Now, the council can change those percentages through the charter member process at any town meeting you, you want.
But I'm, I'm just saying, I think five percent was probably a, a, a good number then, um, because, and I, and I'm not saying five percent isn't the wrong number now. I'm just saying if, if they come in with a substantial number of, of citizens' petitions, it just makes it, you know, signatures, it just makes it hard to say no, because, because people do, people do want this, you know what I'm saying? Where, and, I mean, at the five percent, I mean, personally, I think that I would rather see them come in at the five percent, because as one town councillor, I don't like using my authority to move things on the ballots, you know what I'm saying? I would rather have it done by the voice of the people. So the eight fifty-eight is basically telling me, sorry, we're going on the ballot. So I have no problem staying with the five. I just feel that it's just, it's just too bad that, you know, four hundred, I'm, we can just keep going down two hundred people when, you know, so it's just, it's just.
We have a bar, and, and.
It's, people have gone.
It's set.
The sad thing, and the reason why I'm feeling this way, is people in this community have become unactive in the community. The five percent ten years ago would have happened. And that's why they came up with that number, I know, because people weren't complacent when I first moved here. Town meetings had eighteen to two thousand people in them to vote on the budgets. So there was a definite more active feeling of being involved, whereas people just come home and do their daily lives. So, you know, the five percent, maybe on an issue like this, you know, I don't know what's going to happen, but as one councillor, I would be more comfortable with the eight hundred and fifty. At this point, I, that would be the best way for you to go, because then it takes it out of our hands, it's back in control of the peoples.
Okay, folks, we have.
I have a question.
Additional items tonight, so how long do you want to have public comment, council?
Oh, Marty seems to be one of the person.
Marty has a question. I'm just curious to say.
I have a question.
Okay.
Just for clarification, so people understand, and I understand. David, if, you're saying if they get a hundred and seventy-one votes, and the council says, yes, put it on the ballot, they still have to get the eight hundred and fifty-eight?
The way the charter's written, if, if they receive a petition with one percent, which is about a hundred and seventy people, and the council's yes, says, yes, we support the petition.
Right.
It ends there.
Okay.
That's the sense of the community with these folks.
And if they say, if the council decides not to, then if we come back with eight fifty...
Then it automatically goes to the voters.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. Um, just a quick comment. Um, I know you've got a lot of other things to cover, and, um, I know how important they are, but this is also very important. This community has voiced their opinion in many, many ways. They've come out, public hearings for different things. Uh, I've seen a lot less interest in an issue than this get influenced and passed a article because fifty people showed up out here and voiced their opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Everything that comes before you is important to the community, whether it be one percent, or it be fifty percent. This is just requesting that you please give the voters an opportunity to voice their opinion. This is not binding, it's not going to cost you a penny. What it's going to cost you is credibility with the community in regards to whether they feel that you're giving them the opportunity to do what they want to be done. And if it's one percent, or if it's the five percent, if you still say no, would, would two thousand people make a difference? This isn't about your convictions, it isn't about how you feel, it is about the people requesting that something be put on a ballot that they would like to vote on. Again, it's non-binding. It doesn't cost you, it doesn't cost the state, doesn't cost anybody a penny. This is just something that the people would like to be able to express their opinion on. Thank you.
Okay.
In closing, I just want to thank you for taking the time, uh, because I know what the system is, and I know what can be done. And I was hoping that, you know, there was an opportunity for you all, like another pastor, to make that decision, so I wouldn't have to take away from the State House, just like you, my other duties, which I'll move forward and make it happen. But thank you.
Thank you.
David, can you also ask Bart about seven-point-four? Uh, submission of proposed measures to voters. The council of its own motion may submit any measure or proposition for repeal or amendment of a measure to the voters at any regular or special town election.
Sure.
That's it. I bet that Art said that's the one they use for AES.
I don't, I don't know why we couldn't use that to do basically whatever the heck we wanted, as long as it wasn't illegal.
Art Rug, London Pine Hollow Drive. I was trying to recall that there were a provision like that in there, and I think that's the reason. But when the town council, back in AES days, it was a substantial number, and the feeling of the council, and having that in the charter, that's why we put it on the ballot, as a non-binding referendum. There's no binding referendums, referendums in the state of New Hampshire. It's a non-binding state, but you can put anything you want, uh, and that provision is, is there.
Okay. All right. Let's move on. Old business. FY eleven budget, highway reconstruction bond, as Dave mentioned at the top of the meeting, uh, this would need a separate public hearing, so he's looking from, looking for direction from the council as to whether to move forward with said public hearing.
Yep. So you just give them consensus, my bad? Is that all you're looking for?
Yeah. Do you want me to pause for a hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, for me, too?
Okay.
John?
Yes.
Okay. That's consensus.
So we'll schedule it for January eighteenth. That's all we need.
And we're down to new business.
All right. New business.
Are we just all moving these, um, street names to hearing? Is that what this is?
Oh, we're doing.
Can we take them all as A, B, C, and D, and, I mean, A, B, and C, and move them as one, or do they all have to be moved as a separate hearing?
Uh, you can move them all in one motion if the council's comfortable with that.
But they all should be a separate hearing on site, right?
They don't have to be read.
They don't all have to be read, as we're saying.
Right. Okay. So can I make a motion to do that, then? To move A, B, and C to a public hearing, which is relative to renaming East and West Elgin Boulevard, East and West Woodbine Drive, and East and West Yellowstone Drive? Is that, okay, the way I did that?
Council share, and then FY eleven budget.
Are you guys, uh?
I'm sorry.
We need to focus on this.
No, it's.
Just hold on, Cal.
It's council stuff. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get caught up here.
Dave, oh, okay. So would they have to be all separate public hearings? So I couldn't move them as one big public hearing, could?
You could, you could move, you can move the adoption of all those resolutions to a public hearing on the one motion.
All right. So.
And then we would just advertise for three separate hearings. That's.
Okay. All right. And let me restate it. I'd like to make a motion to move, um, resolution two thousand ten oh-one, two thousand ten oh-two, two thousand ten oh-three, relative to rename, should I list out which street they're relative to?
I think the resolution covers it.
Okay. Um, to public hearing.
On January eighteenth.
On January eighteenth.
Second.
Okay. Motion to move those three resolutions, and the second to public hearing on the eighteenth. Any further discussion?
Nope.
On the eighteenth, will we need to read them, then?
Yes. Then, they'll be read separately, right, at each, as each individual?
So that's why people could comment.
Just wanted for clarification.
Just first, that way somebody on East Elgin could comment, and then Boulevard, or I mean, Woodbine would get to comment, and Yellowstone would get to comment.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained. Motion passes.
Okay.
Should I read, uh, resolution two ten?
Resolution two thousand and ten dash oh-four.
I make a motion that we move that to a public hearing, correct? That's what we need?
No, just the res, you can act on this this evening. It's awarding of a contract for twenty-eight and Page Road.
Okay. Then we don't even, then, just read it in? Do we have to read anything in?
I'll, I'll take that one.
Yep.
Resolution two ten dash oh-four. Resolution relative to the awarding of a contract to reconstruct the Route twenty-eight Page Road intersection. First reading is tonight. Council, if it chooses to, can also adopt tonight, one four ten. Whereas, as part of the town's economic development plan, the town has planned for the reconstruction of the Route twenty-eight Page Road intersection under the state aid reconstruction program. And whereas the council approved a hundred seventy-five thousand in engineering expenses under order two thousand eight dash seventeen, and the voters at the two thousand nine town meeting appropriated an additional one point seven-five million towards the project. And whereas the governor awarded the project a one point fi, one point zero five million ARAG grant, which will significantly reduce the local costs of the projects. And whereas the town has bid the construction portion of the project in accordance with town and state procurement procedures, now therefore be resolved by the Londonderry Town Council that the town manager is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Continental Paving to reconstruct the Route twenty-eight Page Road intersection in the amount of one million, one hundred four thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
My second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions for Dave? Paul?
Uh, Dave, just a clarification. So the town meeting last year approved one point seven-five million towards this.
That's correct.
It's come in significantly under that, which is great. Um, at the point of town meeting approving that, did we go ahead and bond that, so now we've already have that money in the bank or whatever, and we're starting to pay it off, or do we not do that until?
Yeah. It was never our plan to bond it, since two-thirds of the project was being paid for by the state eventually.
Okay.
Our plan was use the town's cash flow to fund the project, and to pay for the town share, which is one-third from a combination of undiscarded fund balance and Route twenty-eight west impact fees.
So there was never, uh, an impact to the, uh?
No, we never, we never issued bonds this project.
Now that you say that, I remember that.
Right.
I had a question. When it comes to, I noticed, you know, we have Continental Paving as being the company that's being chosen. In the bid process, that they go out to bid, and they were the lowest bidder?
We, uh, it's in your packet, in which we received two, four, six, eight, nine bids, and they range from one point one million to one point five nine three million. And the lowest is Continental at one point one oh-four, and the next was American Escavator at one point one six, Tebow was one point two. So it was a competitive bid process, uh, and I've got a great, great, great price. Uh, we anticipate that, I think, we also have a spreadsheet which shows that our anticipated, the town's anticipated share, uh, will be reduced from six hundred and forty-three thousand to about a hundred and fifty thousand if all goes well, so.
That's a big season back in the pot, huh?
Yeah. The town saved a lot of money. Uh, the town's very grateful that we were awarded an ARAG grant, which essentially, essentially converted the first million dollars of expense to a hundred percent grant, as opposed to a two-thirds, one-third. So you couple that with the reduced, uh, it's great, cost of the project, and that's a lot of savings.
Well, I mean, I think it's good that, you know, the governor, and they, they did that, because, I mean, twenty-eight, it's a state road, and the, the airport is also something that benefits the whole state and not just Londonderry, so.
Right.
I think that's a, a good thing for us.
So Dave, what, what hap, for the average person listening to this, what happens to the four hundred and ninety-two thousand we're getting back?
Uh, it doesn't get expended, so.
What does it mean to the?
Well, it's going to be a combination of surplus money.
Okay.
Not being spent, so it'll stay in the town's, uh, resources. And, uh, the Route twenty-eight west impact fees not being expended will be essentially stay in that account for other improvement projects along Route twenty-eight in the general area.
Okay.
So, so it doesn't have a specific tax benefit, up or down, to, to, to Londonderry?
No, I mean, in, in theory, if you're saving, if you're saving a half million dollars, that's equal to about sixteen cents on a tax rate, but I don't want to make that.
Yeah.
Announcement, because, you know, in theory, you can, you can apply those funds to avoid spending sixteen cents on the rate for projects in the future.
Right. That's the key, is we got the money back, so that if an emergency comes down, the.
But when the voters approved it.